Good evening, Cambie. Welcome to the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, Cambie. This is the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting for September 4th. We will forego the pleasantries of the pledge and things until the council meeting. Do we have any citizen input or community announcements at this point? No, seeing none. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes of the Urban Renewal Agency regular meeting for July 17, 2024.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Hodgson and seconded by Commissioner Sassi to approve the consent agenda, which is the approval of the Urban Renewal Agency meeting minutes for July 17, 2024. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's 6-0. All right, that brings us to new business. We have a presentation of the Urban Renewal Annual Report. Eileen?
I'm just gonna go ahead and call Jamie and Scott to the agenda, or to the table, the agenda. They're on the agenda.
Good evening. Jamie Sickel, Economic Development Director.
Scott Slag, Finance Director.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so tonight we are before you to provide you with the annual report for the Urban Renewal Agency. This is the 2024 annual report, and just to kick things off, we thought we would list the goals. So the goals and objectives for the Urban Renewal District, goal one, to diversify the economic base and family wage jobs within the district. Two, to maintain effective, efficient, and safe traffic system for vehicular traffic and pedestrian users. Three, to improve and retain existing businesses. Four, to improve attractive visual amenities for customers and community members throughout the district. So we'll provide just a list of some of the projects that were accomplished in 2024. The downtown quiet zone, so money was spent, while the quiet zone had its grand opening on November 3rd of 2022, the quiet zone, as you will likely remember, there's ongoing costs for the annual signal fees with the elevated safety around having a quiet zone. There is also an elevated amount of money to be able to make sure that we're in compliance for that. So the city spent just under $50,000 for the ongoing fees. Community park upgrades, so those upgrades included two Denali bathrooms, a new waterline, a new sewer line, increase in parking, as well as additional ADA parking at about $512,000, $513,000. Beautification and marketing, so the creation and implementation of the new downtown banners. We have shop, dine, play, and stay themed banners that will be on the light poles on Northwest First Avenue, Northwest Second Avenue, downtown parking lot by the cinema, and around Wake Park. Each of the banners have the Cambie Business, which is our economic development name, Cambie Business logos, and then QR codes that take you to the city's website. And then this was, while they were installed, then the flower baskets came, so you'll see some of them downtown, but in the fall and winter, when the flower baskets are gone, the banners will be in full beautiful view. And we spent roughly $10,000, we worked with Cambie signs and graphics on that. And then also, in the last fiscal year, the final Urban Renewal District projects were identified, and as you will remember, the Urban Renewal District is due to close in 2026. So those projects include downtown alleyways, which is being completed this fiscal year, logging bridge pathway, North Fur Street improvements from Northwest First to Northwest Second Avenue, North Grant Street improvements, and downtown medallions. And that is in list of the most favored to least favored projects. So I will turn it over to Scott for the financial overview.
Did I do that, or did you?
I did it.
Oh, you did it?
I double-clicked it on accident.
All right. So the next few slides are not going to be anything of new. I believe you guys have seen these multiple times over before, sitting on here. So the first one that we come to is the maximum indebtedness. And so basically, their maximum indebtedness is the total amount of tax dollars that may be spent on projects, programs, or admin of a URA program. So this basically just takes us through the top of the $51 million. Then we go down to unreserved revenues, which are basically your income coming in, and then you get your total for URA projects, and this is just basically a sum total up through fiscal year 2024. So all of our projects are listed as expenditures against your maximum indebtedness as we flow down, and then we come to a bottom line of remaining debt capacity that's available for future projects as of 6/30 of 2024. The next two graphs are basically your incremental assessed value and our tax increment revenue. So the first graph basically is, definition of increment is really the growth above what the frozen base was. So your incremental value is basically your increase in property assessed value. And as you can see, it generally is going to start at zero, and it's going to continue on up through 2024. Unfortunately, my graph doesn't allow me to get a nice even number to show 2024, so 2022 is the third bullet from the top, and then it goes 23, and then 24. We will have numbers coming at you here in the report that basically will help kind of further those details. But the incremental assessed value of the Urban Renewal District has grown from $25 million in fiscal year 2003 to $301,901,000 in fiscal year 24. So that's a 1,078% increase over 21 years. The next graph over is your tax increment revenue, and this is basically your increase in taxes from the properties. So as you can see there, it does start a little bit above zero, but that's because when the urban renewal was first formed, it already had a value. And so that value at the time when it was started, in fiscal year 2002, was $451,000. So it increased up to just under $5 million, which you can see that very last bullet point on your graph, in fiscal year 24, and that is a 927% increase over the 22 years. So this next slide is the impact that are on all of the taxing entities. Because I wanted to be able to show the entire fiscal years that the URA has been affected, it makes the numbers very small, so I can see everybody squinting to kind of get an idea of it. The numbers that have been presented, the biggest numbers that you're going to look at are probably towards the bottom, where your assessed value is the $367 million, your incremental assessed value is the $301 million, it's the very last line. And then the very top are basically all of the taxing jurisdictions. So we have Clackamas County, we have the city and the swim option, we have the Clackamas Education Service District, the Fire District, Clackamas Community College, the Port of Portland, the School District 86, and the vector control. All of those are players in your taxing district. Any questions on that? So then the next slide is a cash flow projection that's been presented for basically through the end of the URA's life. Fiscal year 25, as you can see, what we've kind of basically projected as cash flows are going to take our beginning fund balance in this fund, and then we're going to add up all of our revenues, which are made up of property taxes, any type of interest, which interest is hard to calculate because we just have no idea what interest rate we're going to be looking at, volatility in the marketplace, yada. So we take a real conservative effort to try to, we don't want to go overboard, we want to be conservative. So that's where those numbers are coming from. Then we're going to look at our expenditures, and in order to be looking at what we've normally had approved for fiscal year 24 for budget-wise, we just kind of want to play with that a little bit, but again, we're being conservative. We'd rather go low with revenue, and we'd rather go high with our expenditures. And then we talked about our URD projects for this upcoming budget year. And then we have our series bonds that are required payment, and then that gives us our ending fund balance in fiscal year 25 to roll over to 26. And then in 26, we're basically taking again the increase in property taxes at a projection. And it definitely was not a science, it's just a projection of roughly a 5% increase. So again, it's conservative. And then we looked, and you have the same type of expenditures, and what we try to do is basically come to a zero balance of cash flow in the URD district, so that way no money is actually going back to any of the seven, eight taxing jurisdictions. So that basically meant that everything stayed within the URD, and projects were being spent in the URD for the city. So to put it into kind of more simplistic terms, this last estimate of increase in assessed value, what to me this basically means is that the commission has done a wonderful job of basically putting a great retirement package together for the city. If you look at it, what wound up happening is, over the 23 years, the city has basically realized, or the URA has realized, a 14% increase in valuation every year. And I'd love to have that kind of return in a retirement plan. So what you guys have done here has basically started with the URD. The frozen value was what was basically already there. You've increased those valuations, and then that less 3% annual increase is the statutory limitation that Oregon will only allow the property taxes to go up by. So because of this, you guys have basically improved to $234 million, and basically that's where I look at as, this is a great retirement plan that the city has kind of made up with a 14% average increase from year over year. Those are the numbers, and that comes to a conclusion with the finance report. So I'm more than happy to take any kind of questions with the numbers that you see.
Commissioner Davis.
Are we going to be able to see?
Yeah. Could you go back to that slide for the junior taxing districts?
That'd be, there you go.
Okay, I just wanted, just as an awareness point, where it said the Fire District, what is that?
1.5 million.
Oh, the 1.5 million?
Yeah.
Those are payments that were made directly from the URA to the Fire District for-
Correct, and based on the URA agreement with the Fire District, the Fire District was to receive $2.7 million based on the original plan. But the Fire District, in agreement with the city administrator and the URA, agreed to a lesser amount in order to sunset the Urban Renewal District early. So I just want the record to show that the Fire District worked hard not to accept the full amount so that the URA would close early, based on the agreement that was reached with the URA.
Anybody else have a question? Anything from Councilor Patten?
No.
Yes, Commissioner Strenz.
So if there's any money left over at the end of the day, we don't plan it just right, then money has to go back to all the districts?
Correct.
Can't have a just big pizza party or something, use up all the funds?
Money gets to go back.
Gets to go back.
Including the city.
Including the city.
Including the city.
So, and if any project gets overrun by a few bucks, then what happens?
We're not a lot, we're overrun.
We don't overrun it.
Okay. So most likely, we're going to owe money back, right, at the end?
A few bucks.
Because we don't have the option to go over, we're going to-
I think the projects are going to take us pretty close to, I was going to say Nats potty part, but you know what I mean. So yeah, we're right there. Okay. Anything from you? And still nothing from Mr. Patten? Okay. Thank you.
And-
Do you have anything to stop her?
Just that this will be posted on the city's website, so that anybody who would like any additional information about the Urban Renewal Annual Report can see the whole thing, which was sent out to you this afternoon, that will be accessible on the city's website for all to see.
So this PowerPoint version is what is replacing the pretty little booklet we used to get? Is that what we're doing?
I believe we sent out the annual report and the presentation. So this presentation just hits the high spots. The annual report would go into more depth on the creation of the Urban Renewal District. It has more information on the plan, or the, I'm sorry, the objectives, as, goals is the word I was looking for. Goals. It will talk a little bit additionally. There's some extra slides, or extra, not slides, but tables that Scott put together that are included in that as well. So that's all within the annual report. This is just the highlights.
The highlights, okay.
That should be in your email.
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering if there's a paper version available for folks who want it?
We'd be happy to print them for you all and anybody that was interested.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Davis.
Good job on the report. It was very easy to understand, so good job with it.
Yes, yes, thank you. It was very succinct, I appreciate that. Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next piece of new business. I'm thinking it's Tyler's turn, probably.
That is correct.
Good evening, Chair Henzley and Urban Renewal Commissioners. My name is Tyler Eisner, Economic Development and Tourism Coordinator for the City of Cambie, and I'm here before you tonight for the facade improvement program grant for application for Lay Nest, located at 151 Northwest Third Avenue. And just a little bit of background, property owners that receive the facade improvement grant have up to two years to get reimbursed on paid invoices. And so at the time that this was brought before you in July, there was one other application that still was within that time period, and if they were to receive up to their $25,000 for their grant, it would have put us over the $40,000 budget for '24, '25. And so the Urban Renewal Agency approved Lay Nest up to $15,000 and asked us to come back after that time period, which was mid-August. And so that is passed, there was no funds, paid invoices submitted to the City of Cambie, and so we are still, this is the only application within the budget currently for '24, '25. And so I'm happy to go over further details of this application, or if you guys would like to discuss the remaining $10,000, happy to do whatever you would like. And I also have the property owner, Shelley, has come back, so if you guys have any questions for her, she's also available as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Strenz.
To refresh our memory, the other project did not submit any further-
It did not, no.
And just to refresh the memory, how much was left over from the other project that wasn't used?
There was none.
The whole '25.
Yeah.
The whole '25 was not used at all?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so in other words-
So that's why we approved her for only-
For 15, but now the funds are available for the full '25?
Right, so she's back asking for the remaining 10.
Okay, and then we're still saving a little bit based on that, if the other one didn't get the reimbursement? Okay.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Nope.
Anything from Commissioner Patten? Okay. I pretty much remember the project as well. The only thing I want to say is- as well. Um, the only thing I want to say is, it, upon approval, this will be then a $25,000 to Shelley's project. So just want to note that any other projects that come in, we don't have the full 25 that the projec, that the program boasts. We have to make sure any of further applicants know that there's only 15 available.
All right.
Because we're not going to go over that 40. And I'm not sure how that got missed in the budget process, how we did 40,000 for a program that operates in increments of 25, but we'll fix that next year. But in this, this fiscal year, we have 15 left after this, and so I just wanted to make sure that we are aware that we don't have this situation happen to us again.
Absolutely. And, um, and I apologize because the last time was bringing it forward and not having the amount which was budgeted versus what was being asked for. In previous iterations of facade, we had been asked to just bring the application even if we, if there was going to be a budgetary gap, so that then the Urban Renewal Agency could make the decision whether they'd like to, you know, maybe do a supplemental budget or something like that. So we hear loud and clear $15,000, and that's what is available if we receive another application, and we're happy to make that. So my apologies on, on last time, but we are happy to make that up.
That's obviously something that got missed in the budget meetings. I, I looked at that later when I got home. I'm like, how did we do this? This is a program that operates a $25,000 increment, so why we went with 40 is beyond me. So it was just one of those things that happened. So just want to make sure that we know, that we let the public know that there's 15 left in the budget this year. So, okay, perfect. Well, um, yes, Commissioner Sassy?
I remember we, the facade promo started at 75,000, and we thought that was too much, so we lowered it to 40.
Yeah, it should have been 50.
That's why it was, yeah.
Yeah, it should have been 50 if we were thinking about the program being-
Well, we did talk about, yeah. In fact, Jim brought it up, I believe.
So, and I was, I'm okay with reducing it, but the number we landed on doesn't make sense now. So I'm glad that we got that straightened out. Any other questions, comments, concerns from the commission? Yes, we have something from Commissioner Patton?
Yes, Commissioner Patton said, "I am good with going back to the original amount."
Okay, well, we haven't got a motion on the floor yet, so keep him on there for a vote, and as soon as we have a motion, which I'm prepared to take at any moment.
I just wanted to clarify one thing, just going back to what Commissioner Sterns said, that there won't be an application for the other applicant coming forward. That there was a deadline, and that deadline has passed, so that application is off the table now.
That applicant would have to reapply.
Right.
Yeah.
So they just, yeah, they, they can no longer come back and say-
Well, they could, they could reapply.
They could reapply.
But they can't come back on this one. Yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that.
President, I move to, uh, how do we want to state this? Give them the remaining amount that we, $10,000, the remaining $10,000 for their facade improvement from when they came before. So it'd be 25,000 total, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we don't actually have verbiage for that. Yeah, that works.
We do.
Because we don't have a number. The numbers aren't used, so. So, yeah, it's, I need a second.
There's a motion on that page there.
Oh, there we go. There's some, there's some verbiage for you. It wasn't on the-
Towards the bottom, there's, uh-
Proposed motion.
President, I move to approve the matching grant for an additional 10,000 or up to 25,000 for Lay Nest under the guidelines of the Camby Facade Improvement Program.
And I will second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Sassy and seconded by Vice Chair Hudson to approve the matching grant for an additional $10,000 or up to 25,000 for Lay Nest under the guidelines of the Camby Facade Improvement Program. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have something from Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay. All those, all those against?
Aye.
And there are no objections since that adds up. All right, that passes 5-1.
Thanks, Tyler.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our business. Anything else for the good of the order? Take the motion to adjourn.
So moved to adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Most are made by Vice Chair Hudson, seconded by Councilor Sassy, some non-debatable motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Good evening, Camby. Welcome to the September 4th, 2024 City Council Meeting. If you please stand for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
You're happy, Father. Thank you for this great community. I thank you for an incredible summer here in our community. Thank you for the endless blessings that you've provided our community this entire summer. I ask that you please protect our first responders, our police officers, our firefighters, and our EMTs in our community. Bring them home safely every night. I ask for your grace and protection over our students and teachers as they've returned to school and keep them safe this school year. And I ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have some new employee introductions and then a swearing in. So, a promotion, I should say. Eileen, I will turn it over for...
Yes, I'm going to call Jessica up first, and we have a new employee who started last week, I think. Two weeks ago. Yeah, this is her second week.
Hi.
Yeah, so.
So I'm Jessica Roberts. I'm the municipal court supervisor, and we're here to introduce Haley Harland, who's our newest court clerk for the municipal court team. She started with us on the 19th, August 19th, and has been with us a couple of weeks now and doing amazing and catching on real quick. So we're happy to have her. Most recently, she was a project manager with a local construction company, but bringing some legal assistant experience from a criminal defense firm. So has some legal background, understands the court system, and will primarily be helping us handle the customer service load with the municipal court. So yeah, we're just really happy to have her, and she's been a great addition to the team and welcoming to the city.
Well, great. Haley, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
What should we know that's important about you?
Oh, man.
I know.
She didn't warn you about the hot seat questions?
No, it wasn't.
I think I warned her.
Important about me.
Yeah. What should we know about you?
I would just say I'm an animal lover, and I love my dog.
Perfect.
That's very important about me.
There you go. Kind of how Camby rolls. There you go.
There's a lot of dogs in Cam.
Welcome to the team, and we look forward to seeing you more around soon. So thanks. Thanks, Jessica. Appreciate it.
Our next employee introduction is actually an existing employee, and he's being promoted into the position of sergeant. And before I steal all of Chief Trow's thunder, I'll let Chief Trow take it from here.
I'm going to stand and I'll move this over so Gordon will be happy. Good evening, Mayor Council. Tonight, we have a very special moment. We are promoting one of our officers to sergeant, and a sergeant for our department is the first line supervisor. So I am going to have Jeffrey Johnson come on up here. It's Jeffrey, Officer Jeffrey Johnson, soon to be Sergeant Jeffrey Johnson. A little bit about Jeffrey. Jeffrey grew up in the area, attended Camby High School. Some of you may know his dad, who was the principal for many years, retired from Camby High School.
Pat.
Yeah. He attended Redlands University, played baseball for them. He received his bachelor's there and later received his master's degree. And sometimes he gets a little grief from our officers for having masters, but that's another story, right? Jeffrey started with us nine years and three days ago, September 1st. Time goes by fast, because I remember him being my son's freshman baseball coach at the high school, and that felt like two years ago, but nine years ago. I got to read some of the stuff he's done while he's been in our department nine years ago. So he's worked as a patrol officer. He's been a field training officer, a drone pilot. Recently, he's been a detective for our department for the last three years. And as a detective, he's been a member of the major crime team in Clackamas County. He's a taser instructor, a less lethal use of force instructor, a firearms instructor, an active threat instructor, and is currently the Camby Police Association president. As you can see, he's been very busy, and he has actually worked very hard for this promotion. So this is exciting stuff. He was actually promoted officially August 28th, last week. And one of the benefits of being promoted in this position is that luckily he gets to go to graveyard weekend shift, giving up his Monday through Thursday day shift, but it will be fun. We are excited about having Jeffrey on our supervision team, and we are going to pin a badge on him, the sergeant badge, and I believe his wife Leah is going to come up and do that. Congratulations, Jeffrey. Welcome to the team.
I just want to say thank you. Been a member of the community for a long time, and I really enjoy serving in. I look forward to finding ways to serve our community and the police department, my neighbor. So thank you.
Congratulations. Those are always fun. Well, thank you all. Appreciate it. It's good to see everyone. Before we move into our next agenda item, I just really wanted to quickly say all of us are not here on the dais, but Councilor Patton is on Zoom this evening. And then we have our city attorney, Mr. David Doofman. So thank you both for being here and online. Thank you, Jason. It's good to see you. So we'll move into the presentation from Clackamas Community College. Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks for coming. What is new and exciting at Clackamas Community College?
Hi, good evening. Welcome, right? And welcome for having us attend. My name is Wade Hathaway. I'm with the Board of Education. I also said yes to being the co-chair to this year's bond campaign. So that's why I'm here tonight to speak with you about that. And I'm joined by?
My name is Tim Cook. I'm the president of Clackamas Community College. Thanks for having us this evening. It's nice to be here. Well, I think we've got a short presentation for you. We've been working for a couple of years now on a renewal bond that's going to be on the November election, 61 days from now. Not that I'm counting. It's coming up soon. So I wanted to share with you a little bit about the, what we're working on, the projects there that we think will prepare us well for the next 10, 20 years. So we, as I said, spent a couple of years working on this. We did a facilities master plan, an outdoor athletics master plan, and just looked at all of our pieces there and what we needed to do to move forward the next 10 years. This is a renewal bond. So our 2014 bond is finishing up this year, and so this is one that we'll continue on as we're trying to figure out what we wanted to do next. And what I would say about the 2014 bond, because we're not here to talk about that tonight, we went really well, but it was really about growth at that time and building some new buildings. We're really now focused on taking care of our assets and taking care of what we have and making sure that we've got what we need moving forward. So we identified three themes that I'll touch on briefly as we get into projects, but the main one is that we want to expand our career in technical education, make sure that we're doing what our main mission is, and that's training people to get out to work. That's what we do. It's what we do well. It's what we've always done well. We're almost 60 years old at the college, and that's what we should be doing. and that's what we should be doing. Secondly, we're really proud that we have a number of partner community connections. Community is our middle name, Clackamas Community College, and so we want to make sure that we continue to be strong community partners. And I'll talk a little bit about what that means and some of those there. And then, as I mentioned, we were fortunate that we have a number of really nice assets at the college, Oregon City being the largest campus, but also in Wilsonville and Milwaukee, and we want to make sure that we're doing what we can to maintain those. So this is a renewal. We estimated it would net us about $120 million. Our 2014 bond was $90 million, so this is because of the growth in Clackamas County and just the tax rates that it's going to go up from $90 to $120 million, but won't increase the tax rate. So the first project and probably what I would call the keystone project is we're really looking at a center of excellence for our horticulture program, our bora culture program, and farming and wildland fire. So we do quite a bit for those, and I think you probably know, living in Camby, how important horticulture is and to our economy and to our work. And we train a lot of multi-generational farmers, and as we're seeing folks come up that are inheriting farms, we want to make sure that we continue to be in a good space to do that. The exciting part about this is OSU's extension in Clackamas County approached us about a year ago and said we would really like to move on to your campus and partner with you with this endeavor, and we do a number of things with them already, and they would bring approximately $10 million to this project if we're successful. So we're pretty excited about that potential. And welding is one of our most in-demand programs. We have a hard time graduating welders because they all get jobs way before they ever graduate, and so we want to be able to expand that and train more welders as we go along, too. And then there's a number of other pieces that go on with that. Secondly, no big surprise, but education has changed in a number of ways, and some of our buildings that are, you know, almost 60 years old now, aren't really up to snuff to offer what we call modernized learning spaces. So we want to really go in and be able to do what we need to do to get technology in those spaces, to be able to offer more hybrid education, to be able to really look and see where we can have these state-of-the-art facilities for our students and for those folks that we're training for work. I think that impacts folks in Camby specifically, as they may or may not be coming to Oregon City campus to do that learning. They might be coming, you know, for a part of that, and they might be doing some of that online, so we want to be ready for that as well. Another kind of interesting project that we've had, have an opportunity to do is to develop what we're calling a space simulator STEM center. And this is a, if you think about it, almost like an OMSI type of simulation space where K-12 students and college students can come in and do a number of different simulations, where they can go into outer space, where they can have the command center, and they can really work through that, really learn more about STEM. This is an opportunity that there are these centers across the country. There are none in Oregon. There's one in Spokane. That's the closest one. So we're exploring this possibility, too, to provide more STEM education for our students in Clackamas County. Outside, and this, you know, I talk to people about this a lot, you know, we do a lot of education outside as well as inside the classroom. And, you know, we have a number of athletic teams, but we also do a number of athletics classes and health classes outside. And so we're really looking to renovate our track and field, put in a soccer field. We don't currently have a soccer field anywhere on our campus, and looking at some large covered grandstands. Outside of the fairgrounds, there isn't really a large space in Clackamas County where groups can meet, where there can be outdoor festivals and seating and the rest. And so we feel like we might be able to fit a community need in addition to that. And then there's a walking trail. If you've ever been on our campus, a two-mile walking trail. There's sections of that that really frankly aren't quite safe, and so we want to be able to get that done. It's fairly popular trails. And not as exciting, but I would say probably most important, we want to make sure that we're updating and fixing our infrastructure. So there's a number of campus facilities types of things that we need to do. As I mentioned before, there's some technology upgrades, not only to our classrooms, but to our networks, just to keep up. Some of our systems, some of our buildings that were built in the late '60s, early '70s are sharing one boiler or cooler system for several buildings. It's very inefficient, and so just the ability to really upgrade that will actually save us quite a bit of money and be more efficient. So that's something we want to look at. Roofs, electrical changes and the rest that we really need to do to make sure that we're taking care of really the nice assets that the community has been great to give us. And safety. I appreciate your comments earlier and the invocation about school safety. That's something that's on my mind all the time, so we continue to do what we can to upgrade our lock systems on our buildings, cameras and the rest, to do what we can to keep our school safe as well. And then, not far down the road, but in Wilsonville, we educate about 1,400 apprentices every year, anything from electrical to painters, tapers, plumbers, and the rest. And there's a real opportunity there to look at that space and enhance and do some more work around our CTE programs. There's quite a need for workforce training for apprentices and the rest, and so we want to see what we can do with that space and really, really expand if we're successful. As I mentioned, you know, we have some opportunities, particularly, as I said, Oregon State said they would bring at least $10 million to this project if they come. We're able to get matching grants from the state for $8 million per building. So if we build, you know, that agricultural center, if we build the addition to Wilsonville, we could get, you know, $16 million in matching funds. And then we've been pretty successful getting federal money and federal grants to this. Our 2014 bond was $90 million, but we leveraged that to $136 million with additional grants and matching funds. We would hope to do the same with this one and really look to see where we can do that. So again, this is a renewal, $120 million, estimated maintain our current tax rate, and it's our existing tax rate of 25 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. And so that's the information there. And I think I'm going to pass it to my PAC chair, who can be more direct than I can be in some of these things, since I am a public employee.
Tim has to have some guardrails around him, right? But I have none as elected official, right? So I get to kind of say what I need to say, is there, right? Well, I'm certainly pleased to be before you to make that pitch essentially, right? We need support to make this bond happen, right? It doesn't happen without all of you and all the citizens that are a part of the district that the community college serves as part of that process. So it's so vitally important for us. As Tim mentioned, you know, the 2014 bond, in my mind, really sort of set the stage for a renewal and revitalization of the community college. But this bond will set the future for us for the next 10 years, and it's very important for us to do that. Early polling data we have up here, it seems very favorable for us, right? Just the straight-up ask had it at 50%. And if you take any portion of that undecided green box over there and move it on to that 50%, then we're above 50% right off the bat, right? But what's really important about this is that one of the strongest messages, and as Tim pointed out, the community college isn't asking for more money. They're going to keep the rate the same. As he pointed out, right, the average is less than $100 bucks a year for a household. And when that message goes out, the yes goes up, right, considerably as part of that process. And again, if you throw any of that undecided votes in there, that yes percentage now is probably up around 60%. And that's the early polling data. And that's helpful to us, but this is going to be a very noisy campaign season. It's already started, right? It's going to get very noisy by the time October comes. And we're fortunate. We talked to the county clerk this last month, and it looks like the ballot's going to be on a single page, which is good, because measures end up on page two, right, and they get forgotten sometimes. So the big message is vote down ballot, right? Don't forget the measures at the bottom of that ballot, and particularly for the community college. So I'm here to make that pitch to vote yes in November, and we need everybody's support to make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you have, but appreciate your time.
Any questions, please, gentlemen, on the bond at all? Yes.
Your welding courses that you do...
The welding courses that you offer, how long is that course normally?
How long is it to do a welding program?
Yeah.
So we offer those primarily in a two-year degree program or a one-year certificate program.
Okay.
We have some shorter-term, kind of just some real focus skills that you can do in like a three or six months, but primarily they're a year or two years. And as I said, our biggest challenge is many of those students don't graduate because they're working. They get out of work.
Only reason I ask is my son's been looking into welding, and he just turned 18, so
I'll leave you a card.
I can only teach him so much.
It's one of our best programs. We're really proud of that program. The students, you know, it's a great living wage, and as I said, they're, you know, people are clamoring for welders, so we can't train them quick enough.
Thank you.
Councilor Sterns?
He's asking about the welding program. Oh, I'm going to ask about the accounting program.
And I just want to comment, one of the problems I see with the accounting program is pretty much the way the Oregon laws work, it makes it pretty much illegal to hire somebody with a degree to work for a tax accounting office. And so what I would encourage the program to do would be to focus more on the licenses and not so much, well, on the accounting knowledge as well, but without the licenses, it can be hard to hire somebody and technically almost illegal to have somebody operate heavily in the tax field. So I'm just giving my plug for...
I appreciate that feedback. People are surprised that actually some of our fastest-growing courses and the rest are non-credit or non-degree-seeking programs. And I think that's just a trend across the country that, you know, less and less people are saying, oh, when they're hiring, saying, you need a degree. Now they're just like, you need these specific skills.
Well, we need licenses.
So we need, so we focus on that and then make sure we're getting what the businesses need. But it's, the format's really changing. Just the landscape overall is changing on that. But that's good to know. Actually, I hadn't heard that before, so I appreciate that.
Any other comments? Gentlemen, yes?
I have one last ask, right? If any of you are willing, I'd ask all of you to endorse the bond, right, personally, if you would like to do that, right? And I have materials for you, or I can send it to you digitally tomorrow, and we need those back by Friday, unfortunately, right? The deadlines coming soon, but if you wouldn't mind, I'll drop some in your email, or I'll leave some materials behind for you as well as part of the process.
Yes, if you leave it behind.
I've got them all filled out for you.
And we'll pick it up on our way out.
Yep, appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it very much. Good luck with the bond.
Thank you.
Now he has no reason, right, Councilor Maldonado?
He's sat in the ropes with me a couple times. The only reason he doesn't like us is because he's hard block.
That's why he needs to learn how to do it. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next on our agenda this evening is citizen input and community announcements. This is an opportunity for audience members to address the city council on items not on the agenda. If you are attending in person, please fill out the yellow card back there on the white podium. Mr. Wood, would you please point out the white podium for those here so they can say, "Thank you, sir"? If you are wanting to address the council via Zoom, please reach out to our city recorder or our deputy city recorder by 4:30 on the night of our city council meetings, and we will make sure that you are given an opportunity to speak. I have no yellow cards here personally, and there's no one online.
Ms. Mayor, I do have an email to read, if I might, please, from a citizen. Enter a public comment from David Biskar. My name is David Biskar. I served the city of Camby as an employee at the Camby Swim Center for 30 years, and currently am a member of the city's park advisory committee. I have been a resident of Camby for more than 30 years. I'm writing this letter because I have some concerns. The primary purpose of city hall administrative staff is to support the city's employees and the citizens of Camby. The lack of employees working on site is problematic to the people the staff were meant to serve. Most support staff working at city hall have been approved to work remotely. This system has resulted in delayed feedback when immediate assistance and problem solving is required. After speaking with many city employees, it has become clear that this model doesn't serve the employees of Camby or the broader community. It is frustrating. It washes, wastes valuable time and is inefficient. It is not serving the people that support staff was designed to serve. I ask that you reevaluate this policy.
Okay. Will you please make sure that that gets forwarded onto the city administrator for them to address? That can be looked into, please. Okay. Any other online comments at all? Nope. Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that concludes the appointment of Member Deanna Volkarb to the Transit Advisory Committee with the term ending March 31st of 2025.
Motion's been made by Council President Hensley and second by Councilor Maldonado to approve the consent agenda, which is, it contains the appointment of Member Deanna Volkarb to the Transit Advisory Committee with a term ending March 31st of 2025. Any discussion, comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Passes 6-0. Next on our agenda this evening is ordinances and resolutions. The first one is ordinance number 1630, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to amend the contract with Waterleaf Architecture of Portland, Oregon to complete the NEPA study for the Camby Area Transit Building Project in its second reading.
Mayor, I don't have any update on this. Todd is here if you have any questions at all for him.
Todd, why don't you come up and join us? We might give you a moment of pause.
Anything to add?
We've missed you.
I don't know. It was the first time.
So if you wouldn't mind giving the community at large a just brief update on the NEPA and the necessity behind it.
I can't help you with a necessity, but, so NEPA stands for the National Environmental Protection Agency. So NEPA is a study to determine environmental impacts of any building that just so happens to be built. When we originally went for the building contracts, the goal was to look at state funding more so than federal funding, because there's quite a few more rules that come along with federal funding. So I went to apply for several state grants, and the state said, "We now are going to require you to perform the NEPA study," which is a bit of a bummer, because generally you want to do your NEPA study before you purchase your property, but this property was purchased in 2019, so we have to go a little bit different route to get our NEPA study done. But the cost of the NEPA study exceeds the city administrator's authority, so in order to get it approved, it's well within the limits of the contract and the confines of the contract itself, but the actual cost is above the city administrator's authority to approve for the addendum to the contract, so it needed to come before you to get this done. Without this, I can't get any grants, state or federal. So it's a must-have in order to do so.
See? Thank you for coming up and explaining that, sir. Any questions for Mr. Wood? Yes, sir.
How much is the amount over, I mean, how much is the amount we're ready for?
It's 72,000, somewhere around there. It might be higher than that. I actually have the paper. It's in the 70s. So it's an expensive study. We can get grant, if we get some grant reimbursement, we can actually reimburse ourselves for the NEPA study. That is allowed, so.
And is that something you're working on? Are you working on getting grants?
Yeah, I mean, it's all part of the grants I've applied for so far. You can include it in that. It can be a part of your building project as a whole. Now, the building itself is $10 million, so 70,000 is not really a large chunk of that.
Kind of a drop in the bucket.
If you want to call it a drop.
Yeah, sure. A rather large drop.
Please don't hesitate to go get 70K.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yes, Mayor?
Are you ready for a motion? Yes, sir, I am. Okay. I move to adopt ordinance number 1630, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to amend the contract with Waterleaf Architecture of Portland, Oregon to complete the NEPA study for the Camby Area Transit Building Project. Motion has been made by Councilor Davis, thinking about Council President Hensley, to approve ordinance number 1630, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to amend the contract with Waterleaf... the contract with water leaf architecture of Portland, Oregon to complete the NEPA study for the Canby Area Transit Building Project. Roll call vote.
Counselor Padden?
Aye.
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Sterns?
Aye.
Counselor Sassy?
Aye.
And Counsel President Hensley?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you.
Todd, thank you, and welcome back. Next on the agenda for item B is ordinance number 1631, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a cooperative improvement agreement between the City of Canby and the State of Oregon, Oregon Department of Transportation. Also, a second reading.
Jerry?
Jerry, would you like to come up, sir?
Would you like to come up?
I want to be an equal opportunist tonight.
Everybody jumped at the.
I know.
Thanks for the invite.
Yes, no, good to see you, sir. Would you mind giving us an update on, just a refresher on this particular item for us and the viewing audience?
Yeah, no problem. This is a agreement with ODOT that they're gonna do all the, give them an allocated amount of funds to review all the plans for the signal going in for the Walnut Street extension. And so they got a lot of review to their, we've already started on part of it, because they originally were looking at, made us look in it. We're going to be coming back with some more costs for engineering over this. So be prepared, because in this agreement, we had to look at installing a roundabout there, actually. So after all, they looked into it. We're gonna put a traffic signal in with two turn lanes going on to 9090. So this agreement basically is just gonna let them review and help us keep moving forward with this project. So.
A very robust intersection for Walnut and 99.
We've done a lot of research on it and actually had to acquire a little bit more easement. So the whole thing has held, held up the project and cost us more money. So. But the good thing is, we're here with this agreement, and I highly recommend that your council approves this, so we can keep.
I would hope that they will as well.
Yeah.
And everything is going up in cost, unfortunately. So.
Yes.
I appreciate you keeping the foot on the gas on this.
We are. We're keeping the foot on the gas. And once we get this through, I talked to one of the permits people with ODOT. They think it should go through there and fast. And they're, this really isn't, they were really cooperative with us, and they were able to start work on this before we had this agreement even, just in good faith, because they know how important this project is to you, Mr. Mayor.
Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
It is not just me.
Was this your birthday again, or was it?
No, I know, I know what it was.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 1631, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a cooperative agreement, approved agreement between the City of Canby and the State of Oregon, Oregon Department of Transportation.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counsel President.
Go ahead.
Hensley, second by Counselor Maldonado to approve ordinance number 1631, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a cooperative agreement, cooperative improvement agreement between the City of Canby and the State of Oregon, that being Oregon Department of Transportation. Roll call vote, but questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify that the amount of this contract is 123,000. That hadn't been mentioned in the, in the testimony. So just wanted to get that out there for the public.
Just like 123?
123.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Roll call vote?
Counselor Padden?
Aye.
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Sterns?
Aye.
Counselor Sassy?
Aye.
And Counsel President Hensley?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero. Next on the agenda this evening is new business. We actually have an item B regarding an IGA with, regarding debris removal, which Eileen will cover. But first off is item A, October meeting schedule. Maya, do you want to share that with us?
I'm happy to.
Eileen will take it. Thank you. And I will color in where I can.
So, Counsel, just, you know, we, we mentioned the last meeting that we needed to have a couple of off, off schedule work sessions. So I just wanted to review the schedule with you. There will be a work session next week, September 11th. We'll be discussing the Canby Adult Center move, the issue of the CDBG payback requirement, and the ARPA contribution that the council had previously approved.
Did we agree at seven?
At, yes, yes, yes. Thank you. So that's, that's the September 11th date at 7:00 PM. On September 18th, for the work session, we will be reviewing the transportation system, an update on the transportation system plan, specifically the public, the community education that's been done on that, and some planning assumptions behind that report. So it's not done. It's just an update for the council to, to know about. On October 2nd, we will have a work session on the Transit Master Plan. And then again, we will have an off-cycle, if you will, meeting on October 9th. We will also start that at 7:00 PM.
Yes.
And that will be a joint meeting with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, discussion of the aquatics building remodel. The council may recall it, asked for updated figures in that, on that. So we will have those. And then we have slotted city attorney finalist interviews to be determined, because the schedule is a little bit flexible. And so, so just stay, stay tuned on that. On October 23rd, we will have a work session on FEMA floodplain direction. We need to make a decision on that. I don't know a lot about it. I'm not prepared to speak to it tonight. But we do need to make a decision on how we're moving forward with our floodplain mapping. On November 6th, we'll have a work session on the council operating rules and policies update, if the council is ready for that at that point in time. Or we will have a work session on Special Area J. So Dawn needs to have more council time on, on Special Area J. If we have the operating rules and policies discussion, then we will schedule the Special Area J discussion for November 20th. And that's as far as we've gotten with scheduling work sessions.
Yeah, thanks, Eileen. I, I did send out an email with some dates, and Maya caught it like right away. And there was a quick follow-up with some amended pieces, and it was around the.
Attorney and.
Yes, it was around the meeting with the Parks Board, and then also all the dates regarding the RFPs for the law firm aspects that we're gonna need to do. So, big piece of that is, as I explained to Maya and asked for her help on, was that we generally, this will be the first time that I've gone through the, the process of doing an RFP for legal services, because we've usually had a city attorney as, as someone, a position that reported to the city council. So I've asked Maya to maybe reach out to a couple of other cities that have some sort of a measurement or rubric tool that we can use to review the RFPs during the week after the, the posting closes, so that we can work on that. And we have that for our, our conversation. So that would be more to come on that.
Yeah, and that's why I kind of hesitated on that, because there might be some time in between, that there needs to be some decision points on, you know, how many proposals get in, how are they going to be evaluated, you know, what, what decision point needs to be created to create, to allow the city council to make that decision, if that's all prior to who you decide to interview. So there is a little bit of give in that schedule.
Have we received any proposals in, at all? No?
I wouldn't expect it.
Okay. Counselor Maldonado, you had a question or comment?
No.
No? Counselor President Hensley?
Thank you. I wanted some clarity in October. We're having a work session on the 23rd, which I presume would be at 6:00 PM.
Correct.
Are we having a business meeting following it, since we really kind of need to cancel on the 16th, since we're going to Bend?
No, thank you for mentioning that. You will notice that the normal schedule for your second regular meeting in October would be the 16th.
Right.
There is no 16th in the schedule because of the need to get to the conference in Bend the next morning.
Okay.
So the 16th has been canceled, and in exchange, the 23rd has been created. So we will have the second meeting in October on the 23rd.
Right, so we'll have the work session followed by a regular business.
Followed by a regular meeting, exactly.
That's what I was trying to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal clear.
16th is moved to 23rd, period.
Yes.
Makes it easier that way. Gotcha. Thank you.
Can't get away without having more work.
Always, the city's work is never done. All right, any other comments or questions for, or clarifications we need for October, Eileen? We're good?
Calendar update.
Next item under new business is an IGA with Clackamas County regarding debris removal.
So, Counsel, I appreciate your flexibility in allowing us to walk this onto the agenda. There's kind of a timing issue with that. This intergovernmental agreement needs to be adopted by the city in a couple of days and return to Clackamas County. So, so we would like you to approve it tonight. So George is going to, Chief Trow, excuse me, is going to explain it to you.
Hello again. So this IGA that we have, sorry again for kind of like what Eileen said for the, for the short notices, came across my desk today, and there's a September 10th deadline, because this goes in front of the county commission on the 19th for their approval. And it's pretty basic. It's a IGA between Clackamas County and the City of Canby for debris removal during or after a large disaster. The IGA is, it's the ability to use county contractors for debris monitoring, cleanup, removal. And with this IGA, we do not have to utilize it. It is available for us in a, it's a major disaster. It's really for state, right, a state emergency or federal emergency. We could use those contractors if we want. They have a list of contractors they work with. And we would have to make the request for it. We would be, actually have to pay for it, right, if we need it. But some of the benefits of using this and having this IGA is quicker response, quality contractors already in place, rapid recovery, improved chances for FEMA reimbursement, and a freeze-up time for other actions. Again, local, local emergencies and debris, we'll have Jerry do the cleanup on this type of things. But this is for a major, like a major earthquake or something like that. And again, we, it'll only be utilized if we request it. I believe this IGA will be a five-year commitment to it, but any party could terminate after 30 days. We did send it to David this afternoon. I don't know if he's had a chance to look at it, but I'm sure he will look at it before Eileen signs it. So all I request is your approval for Eileen to sign this IGA between Clackamas County and City of Canby.
Mr. Doofman, you have a comment?
I was just gonna say, I was out pretty much all the afternoon in a meeting, so I have not seen it, but I certainly can take a look at it. I'm not, not too concerned if it's from the county and based on the description from our steam sheet. It should be pretty straightforward. But I will look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Doofman. Yeah, reading through it this afternoon, again, the whole purpose is large catastrophe.
Correct.
A lot of it stemming from the, the potential for the great Cascadia event and what that would do, obviously, across most, most of the Willamette Valley and the Poly Metro area. So having this contract in place would be helpful. So I would suspect that this would be pretty important to do. So, did you have a comment, Counselor Davis?
No, just a motion.
Okay, sir.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement with Clackamas County for debris removal.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Davis and second by Counselor President Hensley to approve the signing of the intergovernmental agreement between Canby and Clackamas County for the debris removal. Any question or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item carries six, zero. Chief Trow, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel. Appreciate it very much.
No, glad to be able to do it. Moving on from new business, moving into item eight, old business. We kind of already touched on the city recruitment, our city attorney recruitment piece. That closes on September 20th, not October 20th. And yeah, we'll be moving forward with that. Next is mayor's business. A couple of things, nothing, I think, too monumental. Again, schools are back in session. Please pay attention to speed zones and the areas around the schools. I wanted to thank Captain Gonzalez and Chief Trow. The officers have been out en masse here these first couple of days, and they, and the ones I've seen have had people pulled over. So please lower your speed in the school zones. Make sure you're giving people ample time to cross crosswalks and intersections. I have the, I'll be attending the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee tomorrow evening. So more on that at the next meeting. Also, there is no Region One Area Commission on Transportation here in September. That meeting will be in October. Last, last week, the city held a comprehensive plan meeting for, with translators for our Hispanic community. There was about, I think about 11, 12 community members, excuse me, 15 community members that were there for, and that does not include the two city councilors and city staff. So it was, it was a good turnout. Lots of great questions. And I think back to, I think, something that Counselor Sterns has been talking about, lots of questions on policy, lots of questions on, you know, procedure and, you know, getting connection to the community, specifically the Hispanic community. So more to come on those pieces for upcoming meetings. And I know city staffers there taking copious notes. So appreciate that. I want to say thank you to our sponsors, and those are our business members in our community, as well as our city staff, and those in our community for supporting all of our summer events this year. We had a number of them, not to leave many out, but we had Canby's Big Night Out, we had our Cutford Classic Car Show, Slice of Summer Music Series, Clackamas County Fair, the, the Dahlia Festival is going on right now. So we've had a ton. And again, please look, look those events up. Again, heavy support from businesses in our community. So please shop those businesses. They're the ones that help make these events happen in our community. So without you shopping there, they don't support those events, and we aren't able to put those events on. So Independence Day was another one. So, so many events this summer, and I just want to thank the sponsors. And again, city staff, I know our team works really hard to pull those things together. Thank you to Canby PD for their Chilling Grill. I'm sorry that I missed it. I had a conflict with Back to School Night for my last high school student. He's a sophomore. I know, it's crazy. Two more things. Again, coming up in September, on September 11th, Canby PD, or sorry, Canby Fire is putting on a 9/11, 9/11 remembrance ceremony. So please, 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock?
8:00 AM.
Sorry, 7:30 for me, 8 o'clock for everyone else. Got it. So please mark your calendars, come down for it. It is truly a, a special ceremony that's done at our Fire District Station House. So please mark your calendars for that. Finally, 99E, it is under construction. It is going to be under construction. It will be under construction probably till the end of October. I want all of Canby to know that our Public Works Team and our city staff have been working diligently with the flagging team, with the construction team, to make sure that they're getting things done as quickly as they can. When you're talking about removing down, digging down to two feet of earth to rebuild the road, it's going to take some time. With that being said, our businesses downtown and along 99 are still very much open, still very much doing business. The, the construction team from day one has been very open to feedback and doing the best they can to make sure that driveways are open for us to. are open for us to access the businesses. So just because 99 is under construction doesn't mean that you can't come downtown and support the local businesses, which goes back to my earlier piece about the events that go on in downtown and throughout Cambie that can't be done without the support of those businesses. You know, that like comes together, creates a nice little synergy. And that is all that I have. We're gonna start with, Councilor Patton, you're first.
Hello, everybody from beautiful Wenatchee, Washington. I don't have a whole lot. I did attend the chamber luncheon yesterday, which was great. And I'm sure I've a, I attended another thing, but now it escapes me. But what I will say is this, I, I figured this might come up. And so I just wanted to say, I, I can appreciate people's frustration when they are unable to get ahold of individuals to get information and such. But I will say this, there have been some pretty, I would say, deflating things that have, comments that have been made about our city staff regarding this whole hybrid work model, in which I will say, we do not have a work from home work model. I have a work from home work model. I have no office to go to. I have a home office and I travel. The city staff that do have a hybrid work model work, have the option to work one to three days from home. From now on, if people want to log complaints about not getting ahold of anybody, I want to see the data. I want to see the proof. I am tired of people lobbying these very generic claims. I know that Council President Henley, Henley's daughter, had a problem getting ahold of court. I believe there were some extenuating circumstances surrounding that incident. But what I will say is this, I had a conversation several months ago with one of the individuals who had come to City Hall and lodged complaints about this work from, about our employees having a hybrid work model. And I will recant the conversation that I had with this person. They came up to me and they said, Jason, I have some real concerns about this city staff not being here at the, at the building. You know, we pay for this whole building. We have all these empty offices. They should be here because it's, it's a problem. And I said, you know, I completely understand, you know? It's, it's very frustrating when you can't get ahold of somebody. Please tell me, who did you try to get ahold of, or what department did you try to get ahold of, and were unable to get ahold of them, or in leaving a voicemail, they did not get back to you. And the person looked at me and was like, well, nobody. And I'm like, what? And he's like, well, nobody. I didn't, I didn't have, it's not me. I've been hearing from people that this is a problem. Well, I'm tired of hearing from people that it's a problem. I want to see that it's an actual problem. So the next time someone has a problem getting ahold of somebody at the city, they need to let us know who they were trying to get ahold of, what department it was, what day it was, and what, and, and the more details about it. Because that's the only way that Eileen is going to be able to fix this problem, which personally I don't think is a problem. She is the one that's responsible for managing staff. I'm, I'm growing weary of it. We have other things that we can spend our time on. And I understand that there's this concern that by having 10 or 11 people have a hybrid work model, that it's upsetting other people in the city. Well, this whole thing is upsetting everybody. And so I want to put a pin in it. So either show me the numbers and show me the data and show me where it's a problem, or take it off the table. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Council Patton. Council Maldonado?
I currently do not have anything to report. However, I would like to echo your sentiment earlier with driving carefully with the school back in session. Unfortunately, we did have an incident this morning at Baker Prairie with the motor vehicle and a child on a bicycle. Oh, no. So, and as a father whose child rides a bicycle to Baker Prairie, I kind of freaked out a little bit. So I would like to say, please, 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 slow down. Take your time. Kids don't have the same common sense as adults do. Give them time to move. Let them get to school safely. We're gonna make it to work, I promise you. Okay? On the other hand, same thing with businesses being open, their drive, their driveways are not through fairs. Take the proper routes. Do not cut through their parking lots. You're running the risk of running into somebody that's trying to back out. Just take your time. If you need to leave a little bit earlier in the mornings, please, just do that.
Thank you, sir. Council President Henley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have too much to report this evening as Clackamas County Coordinating Committee is tomorrow. But I do want to report on Traffic Safety Commission. Our regularly scheduled meeting for 9/11 is postponed in, to consider the 9/11 remembrance being held at the fire district at 8:00 a.m. Our meeting will be held the following Wednesday, September 18th at 8:30 at the Public Works Building.
Great. Thank you. Council Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, first of all, thank you to Cambie Public Works and Jerry specifically for their response on the water main link down on Pine and 99, as well as Cub. Their response was outstanding too, and collectively, it was handled very quickly and professionally. And I just wanted to thank Cambie Public Works for getting the street sweepers down there and getting that opened up right away. So they did a really good job with that. Also, the Big Night Out to Jamie and Tyler and all the hard work that had been organizing the Big Night Out, as well as the car show. Great job. The upcoming event is a Dahlia Run, which is hosted by the Cambie Chamber. And that's gonna be on 9/14. If you're interested, just get on the city, or to the Chamber website, and you can register through that. But it's, the Dahlia Run is back. So if you want to walk or run, they have both. So encourage you to sign up for that as well. I noticed too that the alley work has started downtown. So good job to Jerry on getting that started. But they're hard at work on a few of the alleys if you happen in downtown. So that, that's, that's going right along. On the Park and Rec side, again, Auburn Farms, we're moving forward with that through the Park and Rec Committee, Legacy Park, outdoor exercise court. And Jerry says we'll be done about the same time as Walnut Street Extension.
That's not, that's not funny.
Hopefully by the end of September. I don't think Mayor likes that one.
No. Do you really want me to get started on that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Maple Street Park, if you haven't been down there and seen the new turf and the new lights, they're really cool. So they've done a really nice job down there. And I was down there playing pickleball this last weekend, and it looked really, really good. So good job on getting that accomplished on time as well, too. And the Park and Rec Committee looks forward to the joint meeting with the city council to talk about capital projects moving forward as well.
Perfect.
And as far as the fire front goes, obviously, work day to day. It's gonna get hotter tomorrow and the next day. We have been notified of a fire warning danger, a danger as far as high spread of fire rapidly. So we have shut down burning, including campfires and things like that. So it's only gonna be a few days, so just be patient. But hopefully we don't have another South End Road fire. Take off, or remembering four years ago, Friday, was the Labor Day fire that wiped out many houses from Detroit all the way down the Vow.
Four years ago, wow.
Yeah. So it is, it is that time of year again for an east wind event. So hopefully this has crossed our fingers that things remain calm. So.
That's it.
So we, to talk, to ask real quick, we are on.
Thank you.
We are on a ban as of today, correct?
Correct. Yep. Great. Council Stearns?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the comment earlier from the citizen about the hybrid work model. And I can kind of, the last few months, I've been adopting a hybrid work model at my work for reasons that, well, need people to work for us and not all of them are, are available here, which is one of the reasons I made the complaint to the community college about getting people to qualify and to employ. But that's, that's kind of sort of neither here nor there. But I do appreciate the, the need and also appreciate the, how sometimes it may be necessary. In fact, we tried to hire somebody and we had to let them go because they were not as qualified or useful to the business. And then that was in-person person, as somebody who was working remote. But I kind of wanted to just talk about reiterating something I've talked, talked about a while back, and maybe I haven't drum, beat the drum on it recently, is the need to have some sort of better system of reporting complaints in whether service or things needing to happen. Because of what I sense, at least behind that letter, is somebody tried to get something done and is frustrated because they couldn't. And of course, they see a cause that they think might explain it. The reality is it may or may not explain it. It could explain it, but it could be, like I say, my own personal experience, somebody in the office can be, just because they're in the office, I mean, they're working well and doing customer service, and somebody outside the office could do a good job. There, there are things about, but the main thing, there are complications about it. But the main thing is to stress that we need a, a way to better allow communication between perhaps citizens or that are maybe not used to government, dealing with government, and make it more simple for them to interact. And like I say, I've said, community academy would be useful. Also, perhaps a system on a website or computer system that where you can say, hey, I tried to get this done. How do I do that? Somebody looked at it and say, oh, well, this is easy how to do it. I just had an experience at work where somebody's had trouble with IRS for a year or more, and then I solved it with a 20-minute phone call. And it's just, it's, it's good, it's, anyway, I'd just like to reiterate that it's a very good idea to work on improving the way for citizens to be able to communicate and express their grievance in a way that gives them feedback that their concern has been, has been taken care of. So, and like I say, I like to have kudos to the fire department because I had an issue with them. And I won't say what it is basically, but I got feedback directly back that said that they, I was listened to and, and policies were changed based on my complaint. And that, for me, means that I have confidence that the fire department's just not out there to get me, you know? But there were some people in the situation that thought the fire department's purpose was to get out there and get them. And it's just really important that we don't have that, that mentality grow out there. And we may not be able to resolve it completely, but I think we can do a lot more to address that, to make it, make it better. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Council Sassy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I got a few things because I went to the summit with you. I don't want to lose the fact, when these gentlemen or women come and speak in front of us, they're usually, I consider them pretty high in the community. They really care about the community. I know we've talked about this forever, but I don't want us to lose the fact that they're coming to speak. Because they usually, because I've been in that predicament. I was in the back of the room. I would come up and speak. If they're bringing issues to the table, they usually have their facts in line. David Biscar, I think, is probably one of the most neutral-based, greatest citizens we have. He worked here forever. So when David says it, it's not the same old people, and I'm not making fun of Mr. Johnson or Greg Perez that come, because they care about the community. We see them all the time. I don't want us to, oh, God, here they are again. So I want that to really stay with us, that they're here, not just for themselves, but for other people. That's enough of that. So, back to the summit. The biggest thing that I took away from it, and I think you did too, was communication. They were very upset with the communication. I think bridging cultures could do a better job. Daniel and I talked about that. He showed some stuff to me. We need to be more involved with the schools. They get more information from the schools than they do from the city. So we need to do a better job with that. And for years, I've been down on Township and Redwood. It is a nightmare. It's an absolute nightmare. I stopped and talked to a flagger gal today that is just out from the school. I said, you need a flagger down on Township? Because that's, it's a steady line of ants. And I feel for the people. They get frustrated too because they, you know, you've got, instead of 20, they stop, and then another 20, they stop. It's just a solid line of ants. So everybody gets upset and then tempers flare, and next thing you know, a kid gets hit. So I think we need to reach out to the school, or maybe the school could do it. Just put another flagger down there. It's just at the end of school. If you could get ahold of those, Eileen, I think that would be a huge improvement. Because it is, there's a lot of kids coming up that road.
There's, there's tons of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to say.
Make sure your microphone's turned on.
I, I did that this time.
Okay.
Right?
Good job.
So I, I'd just like to say, as of the 15th, happy Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, sir. All right. Item 11 on our agenda this evening is city administrator business and staff reports.
Hold on one second. Council Sassy, I just wanted to follow up on what intersection did you feel that we needed in?
Township and Redwood.
Township and Redwood. Okay.
Is that for the Trost School, like they need?
Yeah. It's, it's.
I just wanted to be able to mention that to the school districts.
Before school and after.
I don't have a lot of items tonight, but just wanted to report on, we have given the go-ahead for waste disposal to start early tomorrow due to the, the expected heat event. So they just want to get started at 5:00 a.m. rather than their usual time. So I just, I think we've already given them the go-ahead. Just wanted to tell you that. I'm working on revisions to the bi-monthly report that you'll see to make sure that the council goals are listed in the first section of that report, and everything else will follow on from that. And then I will be away at the ICMA, the International City Management Conference, September 21st through 25th. So just wanted you to know that as well. That's all I have tonight.
What were the dates again on that?
The 21st through the 25th.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Next opportunity for citizen inputs. Anyone wish to address the council? Seeing none. Maya, action review this evening?
You've approved the consent agenda, adopted ordinance numbers 1630 and 1631, and approved the IGA between the city of Cambie and Clackamas County for debris removal.
Great. Thank you very much. I will take, is there anything else?
I'm going to adjourn.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to hang out?
No.
Not seeing any. Cambie, we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a great couple of weeks.